Twenty eighth, four P M. And we'd like to welcome everybody to the Ottawa City Commission Study Session. Uh, do we have any public comments?
We do. We have one registered for item two B.
Okay, we'll wait till we get to that item then. Um, item one is the items to be placed on our regular city commission agenda, which is the minutes from our August seventh and our August fourteen study sessions. And our August twenty first regular meeting. There's also a proclamation in here um on page seven that will be honoring the twenty twenty-three Ottawa High School Wall of Honor inductees.
Who's gonna read that proclamation first before I agree to let it go on?
Well, I would hope that it's our mayor pro temp Skidmore. Is well to receive, to read it, I mean, just.
Right now it's four, there might be three, but we'll see.
Well deserved.
Well deserved, well deserved. Um, and then. Commissioners, we have voting delegates for the League of Kansas Municipalities Annual Conference. Typically, we have. Three votes. Do we know who else going? I'll be there. I'll be there.
Yeah.
Okay, um, is it okay all us three?
But we need alternates too.
Okay, that's three being voting delegates and then. Us three and an alternate.
Is Emily going? Do we know?
Okay. Commissioner. Commissioner Clayton, Commissioner Graves and I will be our voting delegates.
Taylor.
I'm sorry, Taylor. Uh, and then our uh city manager will be the uh alternate. Are you okay with putting all that on to our regular city commission agenda?
Yep.
Great, thank you. All right, item two, uh A is the ordinance amending zoning regulated regulations to allow city agriculture. With our city manager and our city attorney, Mr. Finch. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. You should have. Received the memo from me and then four different documents and these all kind of flow together. Um, I'll just cover. The city ag ordinance and then I know you have a public comment on item two B. So before I get into that, um, if you want to take public comment, we can do that. We have had a variety of requests for. Um, what I'll call low intensity agricultural uses throughout the residential areas of the community. Uh, started with the idea of folks keeping chickens for egg production. Uh, and then uh obviously expanded to the idea of of engaging in beekeeping. And what we see in cities, um, large and small is. An allowance of some kind of agricultural activity. As long as it's a low intensity use and it doesn't change the predominant character of the neighborhood uh takes place. And in looking at our code, and by that I mean our zoning code, um, we had provisions about agriculture. In chapter twenty-four on accessory uses, uh, but we didn't really. Allow for kind of a low intensity ag use on smaller plots of land. Um, so while we allowed, for example, produce stands um on in residential yards. Uh, and we allowed for the keeping of some animals on lots of a certain size. Uh, we really didn't get as small as the quote-unquote backyard chickens. Or uh, we allowed, God, we're currently allows for the keeping of bees. Um, but it's not regulated and we didn't make allowance for any commercial style transactions. With those uh byproducts, so eggs, honey, uh, and beyond the the backyard stand. Um, there was kind of a confusion between our. Our ag uses or low intensity ag uses and home-based occupations. So the first document you have is the creation of a city agricultural accessory use in residential areas of the community. Um, the architecture of the ordinance, this would go into the cities, this would be a text amendment to the city's zoning ordinance. Uh, and create a new section, uh, twenty-four dash six oh three. Um, and. If the first section kind of says this is what. City agriculture is. Uh, and then it says this is what it's not. So we kind of try to define it and then say, these are some of the things that don't fit. So that list from A to G. Commercial dog kennels and dog breeding and livestock sales and butchering and animal processing and onsite sales are all things that are not city ag. Um, but what, you know, included are those low intensity uses of backyard garden where someone wants to take stuff to the. To the farmer's market or sell at a stand in their front yard, um, which is allowed in the code now. Uh, someone wants to engage in backyard chickens and and, you know, maybe sell their eggs um at the farmer's market. Uh, or sell honey. And this is. Not for commercial activity, right? So this is not somebody's gonna come over to the house all the time buying things. It's also, uh, you know, not designed to catch somebody selling a single bottle of honey out of their house to their neighbor or. You know, their their neighbor, hey, we got a bumper, uh, crop of eggs here. Do you want some? Uh, you want a dozen eggs uh for your family, those kinds of what I'll call microtransactions probably all the time, but well, you don't. Rate of cars lined up at someone's house, treating it like a store. Uh, as opposed to having that in a commercial area of town. So. Uh, the regulations in section two say where this is allowed. Those are basically the ag district and then all the residential districts um. And. Common sense kinds of things. You can't create a nuisance for your neighbor uh with your city ag activities. You can't uh. Uh, be out of compliance with any other regulation about animals. So just. You're engaged in city agriculture doesn't mean you can violate. Uh, an ordinance on how many chickens you might be able to keep or violate an ordinance on on dogs or violate an order. Now, you'll see in a minute, we have an ordinance on ponies, actually. Um. You can't create noise, vibration, smoke or odors uh that go across your lot. Um, so imagine um certain types of manure and fertilizer that would create a problem uh for your neighbors. Um, and you can imagine burning and that sort of activity that might create a problem across the property lines. Um, so the idea is to again keep this to a kind of a residential use. Um, can't change the predominant character of the neighborhood. And then the limitations on sales. And then you'll see in section three, we clearly say this is not a home occupation. So we're trying to differentiate those commercial type businesses that might take place in the home, the accountant. Or attorney or person who does internet sales out of their home from this sort of. Uh, agricultural low intensity use. So that's uh, that's why that's. And then. I felt felt it was best in this one to direct where it goes. In the zoning ordinance, normally we let the city clerk decide in a in conjunction with our city code folks where things go. Since this one's going in the zoning ordinance. Feel like it was best to direct where that went. So any questions on city ag?
Do you know off the top of your head about the twenty-four five oh one? I saw that referenced on the the sales of like bulbs and stuff, what that specifically is.
That twenty-four five oh one is the one that allows for a a produce bowl. A flower stand in your house, on your in your yard for, I think, not more than a hundred and twenty days of the year.
Okay.
And that's been in the code for a long, long time. We just didn't, we wanted to make clear, we weren't trying to. Take away that right that people already have.
Oh.
So.
Uh, is there any grandfathering in them anyway here in town, do you know of, or is there?
So currently. There's nowhere in town that you can't have a garden, right? And we see that um. Currently lots smaller than, I think, two acres cannot have chickens. Um, so you you have nowhere that right now there are legal backyard chickens in the community. And you have, I think, four locations in town where there are active beehives where people are keeping bees actively. And my understanding is that what we've proposed here will not interfere. Uh, with those activities that are have been ongoing. So. I don't know that we need to grandfather anything because we're actually kind of expanding the use. Um, here, you're actually allowing more things to go on uh in this low intensity agricultural use. And you're not limiting it. It's not that if somebody's currently doing it in an R one. They are in an R two, for example, they could only do it in an R one zone, single family. The this allows for it in all of the residential zones where they can meet. That question? So, okay. Um. Other questions?
So those four individuals would be required if this ordinance is passed to. To uh, to grab, to get the permit for the bees?
Okay, and we'll talk because bees and chickens are a little bit different because bees currently are a permitted activity in the city. You really don't have any regulations on them. Whereas the chickens are not. Um, and so we kind of have a difference in terms of whether we do a permit or whether we do. Uh, a notice and a registration uh on that one because it's already a legal activity. So to your point about grandfathering. Commissioners, good, well, we've tried to be very careful here not to take away anything that exists now. Uh, and to find ways that we can. Uh, balance. The urban ag or city ag activity. And the health, safety and welfare of the neighbors. So nuisances are one way that we do that. Um, and you know, some of the other things that you're gonna see here in a minute, we talk about setbacks. We talk about permits, we talk about um in in uh registration and licensure. Um, and so that way the city knows where some of these activities are taking place. There are. Uh, diseases that pass from animals to humans. Um, there can be public health issues when it comes to the keeping of fowl. Um, there are um. Average of about seventy-two deaths a year that take place from stings from bees, wasps and hornets across the country. Um, the CDC tracks those. Um, so there are health, safety and welfare concerns that have to be balanced. And so you'll see in the next two documents. That the the goal is to try to strike the balance between protecting our citizenry and still allowing people to engage in activities. And frankly, agriculture was one of the original activities in this area. Um, the city hall is built on the site of Toy Jones' uh Wild Berry Patch. Uh, that used to exist right here at at uh First and Hickory Street. So. Um, it's as old as the community, if not older, in terms of this area. So it that's what we tried to strike here is that.
Mister, see, have any other questions for? Mister Finch on item two A?
Yeah, if you're good on two A, uh, you can take public comment, Mr. Mayor, if you want on two B, and then I can explain um kind of what we've what we've done there.
Okay, we'll move on to our public comment on two B. Um. Come on up here, yes, please. Please state your name for the record.
Uh, Buck Bradley. So I knew I do not reside in Ottawa. I was here for eighteen years before I uh joined the military. I.
Can you give us your address?
Oh, yeah. So I'm eleven east nine hundredth road in Baldwin City, Kansas.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Um, I moved to Baldwin after I retired. I do work for a nonprofit here or work with nonprofit uh in Franklin County. I've been keeping bees for five years. I've. Maintained about twenty some odd, twenty-five hives. On twenty acres in in Baldwin, just uh north of uh Centropolis there. I'm a board member for the Northeast Kansas Beekeeper Association. But here I'm here as a private citizen today. I spent twenty-one years in the military. Like I told you guys. I wrote many regulations and I forced many regulations. So I've looked at it through both lenses of how this is written and how it is enforced. And Mister Finch, I'm pretty sure you probably wrote this. I think it's a good overall regulation. I just think there are some areas that we probably, you guys probably need addresses from the beekeeper side and maybe the perspective side. And I like to. Talk to you those about those today. So if we look at um under definitions there. Multiple times you guys cite beehives in the regulations and there's no definition for a beehive in there whatsoever. Um, there's several areas in there, so it's not in there. So I would maybe think about including beehive in your definition. Of what it is. You list what a colony is, you list what a hive is, but you do not list what a beehive is. Uh, let's see here, number two, okay, got it. Um, three, um, no less than thirty count days prior to acquiring a new hive. Um, my question is, is if I'm allowed, there's there's a part in the regulations where I think it's three, six and eight, you can keep X amount of beehives. If you are under that limit and your property allows it, my question would be, why would you add burden to the city or to the beekeeper? If you're under that limit to ask to, if I have six hives and I can keep eight, why do I need to come to the city and ask? That's a burden for both the beekeeper, I think, the city. Of a calling or or just updating that. Um, and I noticed in the chicken requirements, there was nothing i- in there requesting if I increase or decrease my chickens. Um, number five, talking about the city, so issue a license. Just as a citizen, I would want to know how many days that's gonna take. Is it gonna be a week, two weeks? On there in section two. Um, let's see here. Six, uh, I I I'm recommending uh at the end of the license, either you guys add. Or require, um, encourage beekeepers in Ottawa to register with Drift Watch. Drift Watch is a program that many pest keeper uh pesticide users use. You go to drift.org, it's ran, it's a nonprofit ran by Purdue University. This will do two things. One, anybody, if you have your mosquito joes or stuff come in, they'll be able to sit there and know where the beehives are. And two, the city will not have to create a database. Because if you guys were going that website right now, you can sit there and look and know exactly where my beehives are. And any beehives that are in the city at any given time, as long as those people properly updated. So I would encourage you guys to at least. Make it highly recommended if not. Um, um, be highly encouraged or at least recommended. That's that's up to you guys.
Remind me where you think that should go?
Uh, right there in section two, um, uh, no colony or hive shall be maintained without first atta- uh, obtaining a license and being required. Being registered into Drift Watch. Sorry, I'm in section two. Apologize. Uh, in section three, A, tac one, you list tracks, but then throughout the other part of the regulations, you list property. So just for continuity sake, if you want to put property or tracks throughout, just a just a suggestion. Again, I know it's ticky tack, but writing regulations. Can be, can be kind of a pain later on trying to enforce. Um, again, we talked about uh three, again, we're talking about uh, excuse me, section three. A tac three, beekeeper shall notify the city, the same manner provided for registration of, we're talking about a nucleus colony. My question is, again, if they are not breaking their maximum number of colonies, why should they be required to let the city know? To get permission to do something they're already allowed to do. And this is my biggest, I guess, kind of complaint or kind of rub in here is, is if you go to um the intense. Um, you look at the seconds or excuse me, that first sentence. If he or she intends to add a nucleus colony, no needs to be notified no less than ten days prior to. Moving into a nucleus colony, first moving should be struck and changed with creating. Uh, that's a proper term and ver- uh terminology in beekeeping. And here's the issue, and I'll get into a little bit of the bee map in here. Um. Cause this contradicts with section three. A uh B or actually or section three B, when it says beekeeper shall maintain and manage apiaries and colonies in a reasonable manner to maximize or to minimize swarming. And prevent a creation of a public nuisance. Bee math there is is from the time an egg is laid, it takes sixteen days to make a queen. During the springtime is when you're most likely to see swarms. The police chief or the um uh fire chief over there is most likely to get these calls for these swarm calls. As a beekeeper, they should be checking their highs every seven to ten days. That's what I do. Now, if I go into that hive on day ten. And that that cell is about to be capped. They are likely to swarm. If I've got to wait another ten days for the city to approve that, those bees have already swarmed and it's gonna be a problem for your fire department. It's gonna be a problem for your police department. And the goal is to keep the bees from going into the trees or going into somebody's home and stuff like that. I think you are, those. Sentences are kind of contradicting each other when it comes down to that, ladies and gentlemen. So I I agree, maybe ten days after it's created or no less than ten days after it's created for swarm control. Cause like I said, you, I I agree, I understand why you guys have it there. But you are limiting that beekeeper. So he has to make a decision here, she has to make a decision to either break that regulation or prevent that swarm from going into the tree. Um.
So can you define what a nucleus colony?
Yeah, so nucleus colony is 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 pretty common use. A nucleus colony is. Short term is called a nuke. Basically, it's five frames taken out of the hive. So for example, if I go into my colony. At the beginning of summer, bees reproduce by passing off swarm. That's how that is. It's considered bees as a microorganism. If I sat there and determined that my bees are going to swarm, I will take that queen. Or the queen cell, one or the other, and I will take a subset of those five. Those five frames and move it. So I create an artificial swarm. So I make the believe, bees believe they have already swarmed. They swarm because there's too much. Too much pressure, too many bees in the hive. And roughly, if you let those swarm. Two thirds of those bees will leave in the hive. So you're talking. Ten fifteen thousand bees will all of a sudden be out on your public street somewhere. With the uh, whether the bee, they can go anywhere in in people's ease, they'll create a public nuisance and you don't, as beekeeper, I don't want them out there. You guys don't want them out either. Because I don't want it as a beekeeper because there goes my honey for the year. You know, because it takes two thirds of my workforce to make that honey. So beekeeper should be doing this, but that's what a nuclear colony is used for. There's other ways to use it. Use it for, but that's why I said, if you wait ten days, you're, you know, telling a beekeeper to maintain and manage swarming, you you don't allow them to do that. In there. Uh, let's see here, uh, let's see here. I think we talked about beehives already. Um, okay, in section three, Charlie. Um, you have all these requirements. I would sit there and and I would highly suggest you just put the language in there, highly encourage that colonies are maintained outside the general public whenever possible. Um, like I said, I kept bees in North Carolina. It was just a good presence. Again, it's not, you don't have to do that, but it is a good recommendation out of sight, out of mind and something like this. I know uh Mister Finch gave it, it gave a number there of X amount of people are killed a year. You are no more likely to get. Stung by a bee if you're a hundred feet away from that beehive than you just walking normally down the road. But bees do scare people and I understand there are people that have anaphylactic shock and can go into stuff of that nature. Um, and then on number, section three, echo. Um, between March uh third, March first and October first, I would just strike that and make that year round. These are livestock. And they should be treated as such. I wouldn't not, I wouldn't. Keep water for my livestock. You know, for my cattle or for my chickens. So those are all my uh recommendations, ladies and gentlemen. Again, I'm I'll take any questions you have, but like I said, I think overall the regulations are written very well, but just for as far as when it comes to. You know, enforcing them and and continuity in the regulations.
You mentioned Drift. Is that a free website?
Yeah, Drift Watch, it's a hump step rate. My bees are, I I voluntary, uh, I don't have to in Douglas County do that. I do it. If you Google it right now, you you like I said, you can. See where all my highs are and it would keep the city. So for example, the police chief or sheriff could have a, you know, quick view of where all the beehives are in the city. You guys very quickly, if you guys do that, it's a hundred percent free. It's ran, like I said, it's it's a not, it's ran by Purdue University. But if you go on there, you can click on it real quick. It's that Drift Watch dot org. But I know some, some places do that. I know. Right now it's voluntary that pesticide applicators are supposed to check that uh before they spray to protect uh stuff. There's, people also put stuff in there like orchards and. Gardens and vineyards and stuff of that nature.
You you had mentioned utilizing um the the new hive as uh swarm management. Given that those are utilized to create new bee colonies as opposed to produce honey. Um. What then would occur with? Would would that new colony that was essentially created to attempt to manage a swarm? Then just become. Uh, a new hive eventually?
Potentially.
What 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 would happen to the uh, to the new colony once that? That swarm threat had been mitigated?
Yeah, so there's a, there's a hundred things. So what I usually do with my nucleus colonies is, is if I allow my bees. To go ahead and raise their own queen. That is bees mate on the wing and that queen will have to take mating flights and stuff like that. That will take up to. You know, after the cell's capped, they'll take up to ten to fifteen days and stuff like that, but they mate on the wing, they can get hit by a car, they can get hit by a bus, they can. Get lost and just not make it home. So what I usually do is, is once I know that I have a new queen in that hive. I will make plans for that nucleus colony, whether it is to sell the colony or maybe I just want to increase my size. Once, you know. I can add frames in there, I can feed them sugar water, and I can build that to a new colony. Will that new colony make honey that year? Most likely not, but before I make a decision, what I'm gonna do with it, I'm ensuring that that hive that I pulled it from. Has a laying queen in there before I make that decision. I think you guys give them thirty days to do it. I believe that's, that's a. Realistic, you know, to have a queen come back and if she's mated or not, because if she's not mated, all I'm gonna do is take those bees. Because. There's been no egg laying going on in that hive for a little while and that population's going to dip. I will recombine those bees and that swarm threat should by that time should have dissipated by by that time.
And since. We've discussed proper and adequate management of of uh. This resource. Unfortunately, when we're called into a situation, it's usually because there hasn't been proper management.
Yeah.
And uh, one of the aspects that I know we had great discussion about was. That that balance of of. Trying to be as as Attorney Finch had indicated is. Allowing as much as we could without creating a larger problem because it's it's that, you know, if someone doesn't. Address the the new issue when a queen's come in, you have the potential there for. Aggression and and. Uh, you know, the competition between the hives. So what um, what would you recommend? Are some steps that that we could do to safeguard? Um, and ensure that. We have the proper management of of bees from individuals that are are subject to breach.
Uh, you want people to do what you want them to do with that? I mean, that that's the hard part. I mean, I was gonna say twenty year, one years, I'd love to have, tell you my marines did everything I wanted to do whenever I wanted to do it. That just. Never happened. That's why we have, right? I'm pretty sure Adam would think the same thing or the police chief over there would think the same thing. People would just do what they're told. He wouldn't have a job. Um. It it a lot. So some of these issues I see complaints or just neighbors getting mad is partly on the beekeeper to be upfront and honest with his neighbors, what is going on. That's why I said I highly encourage you guys to put that in out of sight, out of mind. Because you won't believe how many people I met that are supposedly allergic to bees because they get stung by a bee and they they welt up. You know, that's a normal reaction to that. That's not an anaphylactic shock. You know, um, so part of it is on the individual beekeeper, which you guys can't regulate one whatsoever in there to let, hey, let the neighbor know, hey, give him some honey. Treat him right. You know, like I said, I know that you guys are talking about chickens next. I had more chickens when I was supposed to have in. North Carolina because I couldn't go to tractor supply and get three. I had to get four and then law said six and I had seven, you know, so. You you know, as long as my neighbors didn't complain, I took care of the chickens and stuff of that nature. There was, there was no complaints. Um. When it comes down to this, I think these regulations are pretty well written when it comes to, hey, there's a minimum or excuse me, a maximum you have to have on property. I I don't know where you would want somebody in in a normal size, like sort of a normal sized yard to drop thirty or forty hives on there. That would a hundred percent create a nuisance. Couple hives in the backyard, I don't see that creating a nuisance whatsoever. There will be. Situations, new beekeepers just don't know how to keep bees. They're learning as they go along. There are resources for them. Uh, for the Northeast Kansas Beekeeper Association, the kind of uh Kansas Honey Producers Association. Unfortunately, there's not a Kansas apiary inspector, so you guys could call them. There used to be, so you guys can call them and talk to them. Unfortunately, there's not. You're gonna rely on. You know, subject matter experts in this community. I know there are some in this community that couldn't make it here today when it comes to these type of issues. I know we are, I know when I was in North Carolina. The association and the city would keep a track, a list of beekeepers. So if there was a swarm, they can contact them and 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 take care and help take care of that soon. So I don't know if that's a, sir, I I know it's kind of a long answer to your question, but it's it's. I don't even answer that question, it's true, makes sense. It's hard to regulate that.
Yeah.
I'm just curious on your bees, do they pollinate alfalfa, clover or just whatever?
They're they're all wildflower. So I mean, like I said, I'm around soybeans, I'm around corn, they rotate those crops every year. I got a lot of trees in the area. I'm currently. Turning ten acres into pollinator plot, so you know, we'll we'll have all that.
You had mentioned that you were on a board for an organization in Northeast Kansas. What was that?
Northeast Kansas Beekeeper Association, NECA, N E. K B A dot org.
Mister Bradley, I noticed you had some notes there and I was trying to take them down as you were giving them to us. Is there any way that you could forward that on to our city manager?
Yeah.
We can kind of review those um uh for discussion down the road.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Commissioners, any other questions for Mister Bradley?
All right.
Appreciate your time and your knowledge, thank you. Mister Finch?
Mister Mayor, Commissioners, um, the. The fundamental architecture of the ordinance that you have in front of you concerning bees is based on. Um, the city of Lawrence. City of Leewood, City of Aletha and City of Urban Park. Um, the website that Mister Bradley referenced is one of the websites that we reviewed in terms of trying to draft this. Also working um with um. The council for Allen Fennerty, um, as we as we work through this matter and trying to find that that balance um to address those that request as well. Um. While we do not define hive, some some ordinances define hives very rigidly, size restrictions. Um, including height restrictions, uh, for example, we would have height restriction, some have a cubic yardage restriction. Um, there is an E. Um, one he hive is a receptive inhabited by colony manufactured for that purpose. Um. And so we can get more specific, but you get more specific and you you run into, well, but I don't use that kind of hive. I use a different kind. Some of the ordinance is actually a reference to specific type of hive. Uh, the expert, um, but uh, you know, the when you're drafting, naming one necessarily excludes the others. Um, and so we tried to keep that a little more open. Um, as far as registration and licensure, again, this is an activity that's currently legal within the city limits. So we didn't want to go as far as saying you have to have a permit. Uh, the idea behind the registration and you can see there that it's not only coming in, um, typically when we put. You all adopt something like this, the the appropriate department creates the form.
Uh, and, and then they have that on the website so they can just, uh, citizens can grab that form or fill it in PDF. And in this case, we've allowed that to be, uh, submitted either regular mail, electronic mail or by fax. So. Uh, all three of those ways that this information can come in. Um, I doubt, given the timeframe that most of our folks work under, that it's going to be very long before those requests would be received, that the license would be. Turned around and sent back out. We rarely put a deadline on staff for turning out a license or a permit. Um, if you want to, we can add that, but it's not typically something we've had a problem with people complaining that it's been. Slow to get a permit or a license back from city hall when they've made applications. So. Happy to review that if you want. The idea behind thirty days for acquiring a new hive is that if we have someone who has not been beekeeping presently. Uh, gives us a chance to familiarize them with the rules, gives the city, uh, a chance to, uh, mark where that property is going to be. Um, and, uh, and make sure that all the setbacks can be met and information about the number of hives can be given. I can envision a time when we might have a partnership with a group. Like the Northeast Kansas Beekeepers Association where someone wants to get into this, um, hobby. Uh, that they would, we would be able to connect them up and, and have them get information if they want to get into this. Um, so that just gives some time to get the license issued, to get everything ready and, and let that person go if they're inducting new operations or adding to their operation. Beyond what they have. Uh, again, the idea is not to hold someone up. From engaging in, in the, uh, in the hobby. Um, the standards. Uh, three colonies on a lot of a quarter acre or less. So when you think about. Uh, a quarter acre lot, um, you're, you're probably looking at. What, ten thousand square feet? Um, so a lot of our lots in this community, seventy-five feet by a hundred and fifty or so. Um, kind of a standard town lot and you can envision, you know, three hives on that property. And then it scales up until you reach eight, uh, property that's larger than an acre. And. While we have properties larger than an acre in town, you know, than in residential areas, it's not, uh, very common to have lots that big. Um, and you do, as, as Mr. Bradley said, you have to give bees enough room. Um, and they have to have enough access to, to plants to pollinate so that they can make honey. So. You get diminishing returns if you put too many hives into small space. This is the approach, by the way, that Lawrence uses, Lee Wood and Olathe both have a. And, and overland park will have a cap. It's two or three per lot in those jurisdictions, period. Uh, there is no grading for size or allowing for scaling, uh, depending on how much space you have. So the issue of nucleus colonies, nucleus colonies, as Mr. Bradley said, the reason you need and want permission, uh, Lawrence is the, is the only one who addresses of those cities that I mentioned. Lawrence is the only one that addresses nucleus colonies in their ordinance. They have a thirty day restriction. The idea is not that you get to just add another hive beyond the limitation. It's that you're bringing that nucleus hive in for a short amount of time. And so. They. In order to know that the thirty days has been met, you need some kind of warning. This is the date we're putting it in, right? Otherwise, when do I count the thirty days from? So remember from an enforcement standpoint. Uh, and that's what your staff is going to be up against. Well, when they show up and this lot had. Four hives on it and they're only supposed to have three. And they say, well, that's my nucleus hive. And you say, well, how long's it been there? Well, I don't know. I mean, they might tell you it's been there a week. They might tell you it's been there four weeks, but if they call ahead, you'll know exactly what date it went in. You'll know when the thirty days is up. You'll know when that hive is supposed to be absorbed. And, and the, the actual physical structure removed from the lot. So. From an enforcement standpoint, that's why the ten days is in there to try to address that, but still allow for. An exceeding, a temporary exceeding of the limitation. So that nucleus hive can be brought in. So you can imagine a small lot, three hives. They can bring in that nucleus hive. They'd have four. For thirty days. And then when that nucleus hive is absorbed, those bees are absorbed, that hive goes away. So that's the idea behind that timing. That I'm trying to make it a little bit easier on staff to know. What they, what they're dealing with when they get on site. Obviously minimizing, uh, swarming and public nuisances. That goes along with kind of the theory of city ag that we talked about earlier. Um, the setbacks, um, five feet to the property line with adjoining property, twenty-five feet to a house, uh, on a developed lot next door. You don't want something in the side yard that's immediately adjacent to someone's. Uh, you know, side entrance to their home. Um, and then ten feet from a public pedestrian path or sidewalk. We have a lot of lots, a lot of corner lots where there may be no sidewalk going down the. The sideways there. So that's why there's twenty-five feet from the public street. So we catch those corner lots where there may be a sidewalk in place. Uh, and then note that that's only in the rear and side yard. So to Mr. Bradley's point about kind of out of sight, out of mind, a lot of cities. Do this restriction where it's rear yards only or rear and side yards only. So you don't have hives in the front yard. Um, to try to a- address that. Aspirationally. It's hard to enforce. You know, I think it was bees maintained outside the general public when possible. We have to, when we're dealing with an ordinance, when you're drafting a law, I have to get into what can you, what can your staff enforce? What, what's black and white? What's the standard? Um, and you know, that's kind of the. Aspirational, yes, it might be nice if. If the neighbors didn't look at the hives, but that's not something we can actually enforce without. Ordering that they camouflage them in some way or again. Small lots. And you could get on a lot here where you've got, uh, we have lots in town that are fifty foot by a hundred and fifty foot. That person could still engage in beekeeping. How do you? How do you enforce, uh, out of sight, out of mind? I mean, there's just no good way to do that on small lot. Pretty soon you're not going to have. Not going to have that. Uh, item D is, is the flyway barrier. This is fairly common. If you look at, at bee ordinances around the state. Um, the flyway barrier, it, it just requires the bees to, to come up and over from certain directions. So if you're located. Uh, near a property line, that flyway barrier either requires the bees to go around or to, to maintain elevation and go up. So. That's fairly common. I think that's in all of the ordinances that we looked at. So. Um, the adequate supply of water, the dates, um, I assume are to deal with freezing. The those dates came from council from Miss Fennery. Um, as we talked about that, most of them require adequate supply of water. Um, fresh, clean water is another one that you see in different ordinances. Um, clearly we want the bees to be taken care of. Um, I think the question is, you know, you get into January and, uh. You know, what do you do? Do you go out and? Put a water heater in the, in the, in the water, you know, like you do for cattle. Uh, or, you know, do you, is this? Sufficient? I mean, I, obviously if there's no water out there, that's going to be an issue that we're going to cite somebody at some point for a violation of the regulation. So. Um, requeening. Uh, cubic feet and volume limitation on the hive and then, um. We allow, this ordinance, if you pass it, will allow for beekeepers to keep hives on property other than their own. Uh, so you may have a situation where, um, someone's really into this. Um, you heard Mr. Bradley talk about having twenty hives. Uh, someone in Iowa could have a small lot, but they could still engage in beekeeping at scale. Uh, if they can have a landowner, let them use their land, uh, to keep hives on. So. Uh, they can get permission from someone else. They just have to mark their name and phone number on that hive. So if there's a problem, passerby has an issue or notices something. Uh, or if our staff notices something, we can get in touch with them. So. Uh, penalty provision, um, notify them of the problem, fourteen days to fix the violation. If they've done that within fourteen days, no penalty through the municipal court. If however, the violation persists, or if, for example, we have a hive that's not being taken care of and the judge would order that to be removed from the site. Um, where they're operating without a license, then it's normal, class C, class B misdemeanor kinds of penalties. Um, and then, uh. Failure to remove could result in the city ordering abatement. You know, we've had swarms in town and we've had city, uh, police and city fire called. We had one down by Legacy Square. Like a year and a half or so ago. Um, and so we, we certainly know some folks to call in, in that situation, but also we may have to, unfortunately, if someone doesn't maintain their BI. Uh, or their colonies may have to have those removed. So we want to make sure we have that provision in here as well. So that's kind of the architecture. Of the ordinance and certainly willing to talk through some of the stylistic changes, uh, that Mr. Bradley brought up or any questions that you have.
Do you, not being familiar with all of our other ordinances, is it typical to do like a quarter acre instead of defining square foot? I was just thinking like a parcel search shows me square foot. Most people don't know. How many feet, square feet are in an acre? And if that makes it more confusing than just saying.
So in our zoning code, we'll go to like seventy-five hundred square feet. You'll, you'll commonly see that on a single family lot. Um, so we actually reference it in square footage. So forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty is the number of square feet in an acre. Um, this allows us enough, uh. There's, there's enough solid information there. It's black and white enough to say this is a three hive lot or this is a four hive lot. Based on that square footage. So, um, this is, this is not uncommon. This, by the way, will not be, it's not proposed to be in your, in your zoning ordinance. This is proposed to be in the municipal code. We have chapter, article three on animals. And most of the cities that we've looked at put this in municipal codes. This is what we're suggesting for this. So.
As Mr. Bradley said, when, uh, he mentioned a couple of times about not breaking the max, um, do you have any input on what, what you, how you feel about that? Like if they're required, if they're okay to have four colonies on a lot. Between a quarter and a half acre, but they've only have three, they go to four. You know, why do they have to notify anybody if they're not really breaking that max?
Um, you can certainly have it drafted that way. Um, the idea was that we figure most beekeepers kind of have an idea what they're doing. At the beginning of the year, this is how many hives I'm going to have. And I would guess most. Are going to want close to the max they have on their lot. You know, they kind of know that going in. Um, you know, we can certainly. Change that if you want to change that. If the idea is for the city to know, and one of the suggestions here was to register with the, this Driftwatch.org. Was for the city to know where these hives are at and how many there are. That prior notification is what tells you how many there are. So. I, I think it is helpful to know.
Do you see any potential issues with its? Three F. That it's the requeening colony if it exhibits unusually defensive behavior without due provocation? I guess what defines unusually defensive and due provocation?
Yeah.
And especially as a. From you defending us for taking, I guess. Someone's colony. What would that?
So the, that language appears or some variation of it appears in almost every city beekeeping ordinance, um, that's out there. And, yeah, again, I'm not a bee expert. Um, you'd have to talk to Mr. Bradley or somebody, you know, who, who deals with this frequently. But I think we can imagine a, a situation where the bees near a hive are, are not engaged in honey production. They're engaged in defensive behaviors. Um, you know, if it's close to a pedestrian walkway or something like that, people are being. Uh, attacked by bees or the bees are, are, are swarming around people. Um, it's that kind of conduct. And again, remember that the idea here is not to. Rush to penalizing. So if, if. There were a problem, you know, kids over at, at the, at a grade school were walking by someone's beehive and, and the bees were. All over them, um, you know, officers would go over, might issue a citation and say, something's going on here. You need to fix it. If they can fix that in fourteen days, then there's no penalty. So. That, that's the way I see that playing out. I, I hope that we're never litigating about what, I mean, what that is, uh, and, and usually when you're dealing with C misdemeanor type penalties, uh, you're. Hopefully we're not standing before the Kansas Supreme Court talking about what is unusually defensive. Something will have gone very, very, very wrong.
A question about, um, section three, six or three, C six. Does that, um, where it's talking about land that's not owned by the beekeeper? Um, so. In layman's terms, does that mean if you're renting a home, you have to ask for the person who owns the home and they have to, they have to provide a consent to the city?
Right. So it covers two situations. One is the, one is the tenant who is renting from the landlord. They would have to get the landlord's consent. Um, and you can imagine we do that similarly with pet deposits, not the bees or pets, but. Um, you're engaging in, in this use or activity on the, on the lot. And you get the owner's consent. It also covers that other scenario where, you know, I, I want to do this, uh, I want ten hives and my lot doesn't support ten hives. You talk to your neighbor, you can talk to, you know, somebody down the street and talk to somebody with a bigger lot who says, yeah, I'd love to have bees here. We, you know. You know, a lot of people are getting into planting these pollinator gardens like Mr. Bradley talked about. Um, and, and so I think you'll find that there are some people who maybe have larger lots ago. I personally don't want to manage bees, but you want to tuck a hive back in the corner of my lot. I'd like to have that. So.
So what about if they live in an apartment?
Probably not going to meet the setbacks.
Just for public knowledge. I mean, if you're living.
Probably not.
Flex.
Yeah, probably not going to meet the setbacks, but they could. Um, and if they, if the, uh, owner, uh, consented to it. Uh, and they could meet all the other conditions. It would be possible. City of Lawrence, for example, allows rooftop hives. Um, you can actually put them up on top of the building and there are a lot of bigger cities now that are going to these kind of urban hives that are on top of. Of multi-story buildings downtown. Um, so it's, it's becoming more and more common, of course, as we hear more and more about bee die-offs and. And trying to keep bees around. We know how important they are to our environment. Um, you're seeing more and more of them in urban spaces.
So, um. Whenever we put, um, any kind of new ordinance or we change anything. One of the questions I guess I've learned over my years being on the city commission is who's going to really enforce these regulations?
Yeah. We were going to write this in so that the city commission had to do it, but. No, typically, um, this will be part of codes. Um, and so we have codes enforcement officers who are out. You also have police officers who are out and, you know, just like we get, we have animal control, um, you know, to deal with. Dogs and cats and other animals that come up. Um, this would not exclusively fall under animal controls jurisdiction, but you'd have two or three different groups in the city that would have the authority to. To find, see a problem, to report a problem, to deal with a problem. And then cite into municipal court is the mechanism to get this resolved.
And who has the authority to cite?
So police officers can write citations, animal control can write citations and the code officer can issue a notice to appear in municipal court, all three.
Okay.
You did just miss some opportunity to, to say it will be. Let's just get more.
I was going to stay far away from the dad joke. I was going to let Mr. Skidmore have a heyday with birds and bees today.
I just have one question. It is to be or not to be.
And that is the question you all will be deciding. Any other questions on? The bee, draft bee ordinance?
Move on to TC.
All right. Chickens. Okay. As I said, chickens are a little different because you have not traditionally allowed chickens. Um, to be maintained within the, what I'll call the. Center part of the city or the, or the more dense populated part of the city. Skip ahead to section five of this ordinance. You'll see that, uh. This is an amendment to section twenty-four dash six oh two D. Remember that urban ag is going to go or city ag is going to go twenty-four dash six oh three. So the very next section will be city ag. This section. Twenty-four, six oh two deals with keeping of certain types of animals and it has this provision about chicken, yeast and poultry. Um, maybe kept on lots, no smaller than three acres. Uh, with a conditional use permit. So. We're changing this. We're allowing for now chickens to be kept on smaller lots without a conditional use permit, just a permit for the keeping of chickens. So. Um, back up to section one, when can you have chickens? Um, you can have four female chickens as part of a single family residence with a minimum lot size of seventy-five hundred square feet. Um, and only upon the issuance of a permit, um, submitted by the property owner and approved by the animal control officer issued by the city clerk. That's a policy question that you all can decide. Do you want the animal control officer to review that? Do you want community development to review that? So. Kind of note that spot. That's a policy question for you. I just, I had to draft and write something. So. Um, I think this is maybe Goddard, um, is the, is the base for that. I think they use the animal control officer. So that's kind of question one for you all. The permit is required to keep or maintain chickens in accordance with the section with, within, uh, less than three acres. Annual permit. Um, city clerk with assistance from community development director. So you see it both ways here. Um, we can do it either way, but I just want to point out that's kind of why it's that way. It's intentionally jarring. So we, we fix it for the final draft. Um, approve, conditionally approve or deny the application. Um, and then, uh, what they can look at. So have there been problems before? Um, with compliance? Did they have? Supposed to have four chickens and they had six, uh, or they had a rooster or they didn't keep them in the coop. Um, you know, or something like that. Didn't comply with the public health directive about. Uh, a disease affecting, um, fowl in the, in the city. So. And then complaints. Issues, nuisance, that sort of thing. So all those can be taken into account when looking at a permit. Um, denials in writing, so they know why. The reasons for denial. Uh, also can give the reasons for a conditional use. You know, you haven't shown that you have a coop yet, or, you know, you're. You know, you're not operating within the setbacks. Show us that you're going to relocate the coop and, and do that. Those things can happen as part of that. Submission of the application is deemed to be consent of the applicant to inspect. We're going to see a lot of these in backyards. They're not always visible. Um, if we get a complaint that somebody has a rooster, for example, and they have a privacy fence in their backyard. Um, this provision allows for the code enforcement officer to call them and say, I want to come and inspect this and. You know, so as I, you want the permit, you got to agree to let us in and check that out. So. Um, the fee is established by resolution. The fee is established by resolution, that's the fourth document that you all have. And must be, yeah, again, you get the permit before you get the coop, so it's like you get the license before you get the hive. Get the permit before you get the coop, and they're not transferable, so you, you get it for you and not for the next person you're with there. These are the standards and regulations in section three, all fairly similar to other cities. And I think you had all talked through these with Jenna. Obviously, the, the fenced-in coop with the run, to keep them from being a fallen victim to predators. And ten-foot setbacks, a hundred feet from other, other property, other established houses. Or other buildings, and nowhere other than the rear yard. And obviously not on, on land of other people without permission, so. The public health sections be there, they comply with orders issued by the animal control officer, so if we know diseases affecting chickens within the city. Then they have to comply with whatever those safety regulations are, and you can't. Take your hand when she's not laying eggs anymore and slaughter her in the backyard and throw in the cast iron skillet, so. Penalty provision set by the municipal court not to exceed a B misdemeanor. We can make that a C for a first offense and a B for second or subsequent, that's pretty common. I just, it's B in there right now, so. And then, we, just noting that the. Other ordinance, what we'll probably do. What I'll, what I'll probably change in this D, and that's what I've not done yet, is either. Strike chickens, or we'll add a, a section at the end, you know, unless done in accordance with ordinance, whatever, which, whatever the section ends up being. And again, this one is designed to go into the. Into the city's municipal code, not into zoning ordinance. So we make a couple of changes in the zoning ordinance, but the actual language about chicken regulations will be in the city code. And then a resolution to set the fee, whatever you all want to set the fee at, if you decide to adopt this, and then that's it for my presentation.
That's wondering about the square feet, I mean, do we have any lots, I mean, like fifty by one thirty-five that would qualify in this case? I don't know about that seventy-five hundred square feet, is that pretty much common with the other cities we looked at it, or?
The seventy-five hundred square feet came from the notes in the conversation that you all had with Jenna, and I think it is. Typically, it's, it's our new minimum lot size for single family.
Oh, it is, fifty by one fifty, I guess.
So you can't, you can't create a lot smaller than that now. There may be some that are smaller, but you can't create a numerous one over them, so, and we can certainly revisit that.
Lots of. Well, yeah, Mayor Kirkham Skidmore is just saying, I mean, for a new home, you know, builder, yeah, that's fine. But for somebody who obviously already lives in a house, that may, you know, take advantage of this, you know, if it comes to fruition. You know, they may not fit into that square footage.
Yeah, I agree on that, and then the, it's section three A two, the hundred feet. Any house or other building, I'm thinking about how many neighbors have a shed that you're. You just physically can't be a hundred feet away from other people's property, anywhere in your yard. So I would definitely want to think about shrinking that down to something a little more. Probably realistic that would fit more, like you said, lots in town.
So you see it in the Bs where we've done it from an, from an occupied dwelling. I think you could easily do something like that, or.
Yeah, like an accessory structure, I wouldn't think you needed further from someone's shed.
Right, so.
Fifty feet instead of a hundred, or what?
These is twenty-five.
Bees are, bees are allowed inside your too, so this is only in the backyard. But certainly you could go, you could go fifty feet and, and, you know, be in pretty good shape, and you go fifty feet from an occupied dwelling.
I think that's, yeah, I think that's.
And then back to the minimum lot size, so that fifty by a hundred and fifty. That's seventy-five hundred, do we have a lot, a lot smaller than that? Do we have any lots? I mean, I know you can buy a twenty-five by one fifty. I don't know if we have any with houses on them that small. We'll look and see what we've got and make sure. And, and try to harmonize that. I'm guessing we don't have a lot that are smaller than fifty by one, at least not with houses on them. But we'll take a look at that.
Then I was talking to somebody about the number of chickens, I asked them what was appropriate number, did they think? They were thinking more like six to eight. Not understand if you're gonna expense putting up a coop and a fence and all these things, we've got some economies of scale to look at. For four chickens, it may not, you could spend a lot of money, but maybe six to eight would be a better number, I don't know what you all. Far as the number of chickens go.
I, I'd rather stay at four, just to start out, and if we need to, if we don't see that it's. That it's bothersome, or if we see the need to, to make it bigger, but. What I hate to do is start at eight and then go like, whoa, that's way too big, and then we have to. Scale back, we can always scale up, or can we make it bigger, but we just can't make it smaller.
We can't do it.
Yeah, you can do that, outside.
It's harder to go down in size without taking them out back.
Mike, they say anything about why they prefer the six to eight?
Just the, the cost, you're gonna have, you know, certain sized coop, and you're gonna have some money expensed on this whole process. And for just four chickens, I mean, and then lay an egg every day, if you got a family of six, I don't know. That was just kind of the thing they thought they would be like between six and eight. Did they have this at Goddard? What number did you have there?
We kept it at six.
Six. Maybe six would be a good compromise.
Commissioner Clayton, how do you feel?
I obviously don't know a lot about chickens and how frequently they lay and how many is a lot. I do think it's always easier to go up and allow people to have more than it is to start at eight and try to come back. So I think four or six, whatever would be reasonable, if we start at four, and if we have a lot of. And I don't know if we do a process that people can request, hey, I have four, I really like six, here's why. And if we get enough, look at revisiting that. I don't know if six would be a nuisance, I mean, would be a nuisance more than four. Without, I don't have a lot of foul experience, except with language, but. I, I don't have a problem with a larger number. I just do think if we set it at six and we realize that's too many. And we try to pull it back to four, I think that's gonna be a bigger problem than setting it at four now. Telling people, hey, this is new, be honest with us, if you. Give us some reasons why you would want six in the whole permit process and all of this. And if we may not hear it, and if we hear a lot of feedback from people having chickens that they'd like a few more. I think it's something we could, you know, revisit in a year and see.
I just keep revisiting some of the information we had from other cities, and I. I believe that a lot of those had, you know, the tried and true methods, and I believe a lot of them had six. As a number, as a starting number, or as their number. And same thing, I don't know anything about chickens, how often they lay, or anything like that, so. I, I, I mean, I. If you guys are in favor of certainly reviewing this down the road, I know this, this process has taken some, you know, period of time, but. I hate to set it at four, and then that's really not kind of reaching the goal of. Of what the individuals that came here months ago and asked for us to do, where I, I, I. You know, hopefully, I don't know if six would, and I don't even know if eight would, quite honestly, either, so.
And I'd like to say, as you mentioned, Diana and Jenna brought. It had information, I don't remember exactly what date it is to go back and look at the agenda now, but what other cities had.
Give Commissioner Taylor a minute, she'll tell you.
Cause I think, like you said, yeah, if we, you know, without that right in front of us, I think that would make sense to kind of go with what is consistent.
While I'm looking. Can. City Attorney Finch, can you explain to individuals about the change again from B misdemeanor to C misdemeanor, or the changing of? This, because. If you're not in the courts all the time, you don't really understand what the difference is, I would say.
The most, most commonly, when you see a violation of either a zoning ordinance or. An animal ordinance in, in almost any city in Kansas, it's one of three misdemeanor types. They go C, B, and A in order of severity. C is up to a month imprisonment, up to, I think, a five hundred dollar fine. B is six months and up to a thousand, and A is up to a year, like fifteen hundred to two thousand, and fine. Practically, no, very, very, very rarely, does any municipal court order incarceration as a sentence for any of these. And our judge is certainly loathe to do that, he understands there's a cost to that, and that's not really the point, the point is to. Eliminate whatever nuisance or whatever, and that's really what you deal with most of the time in these situations, is something is happening that's. Infringing on the rights of the neighbor to their quiet enjoyment of the property, so how do we get? That condition abated, and that's really the goal of the municipal court, is to say, hey. You're, you're not listening when the neighbor's complaining, or you're not cleaning this up. So how do we get some, some order in place that, that the person will follow and, and clean it up? So, usually you start with a C, and then if it's a second or subsequent and somebody's not responding, you can elevate it to a B, but. In the time that I've been both, I've been a defense attorney and a prosecutor and a, and a pro temp judge in county courts. We, we don't like to put people in jail, they typically don't put people in jail. But that's just the way the Kansas statutes separate out the grades of misdemeanor offenses, so.
So I would actually be in favor of making it a C.
Just to follow kind of along with the, the B one, do we need anything in here to specify water? I don't know if we have that in for, you know, dogs, other type of, of animals. And I know we mentioned it in the B, and it was something that came up if.
Yeah, one of the distinctions you get, and I can look, Commissioner Clayton, one of the distinctions you start getting to is you. You have a whole host of cruelty to animal regulations and statutes that apply when you get into. Chickens and, and cattle and dogs and cats and all of that, that don't apply to insects like bees. So that's why you tend to put a specific thing about water within the, the B ordinance and not in the others, but I check on.
I was wondering about the permits too, it says on annual basis, and I don't know if other cities have done that. I, I think maybe in some ways would it by annual, every two years, it seems to be a lot of work on our side if we get a lot of. In houses here in town for our city workers. I don't know if you think every other year is adequate.
I, I just sent the, the information that I caught from February second, but almost. All of them require, well, a three-fourths of them require a permit.
Okay, so, but did they require annual, granted on annual basis?
It doesn't state that.
And I also thought about the, the fee, we've had some people here in town, of course, asking about this ever since about the first years. Here we are eight months later, working this. I wonder if we would consider waiving the fee for this calendar year and not start it until next year. As a way of telling these people that have been asking about it, hey, okay, sorry it's taken so long. Situations come up, it's not your fault, but here's a way to compensate them for their trouble.
Still require them to apply, so when they came in the beginning of the year, would that be a renewal with the initial?
Because then if we're gonna require a fee, which I don't know how much we're talking about.
I think that's what we're getting into.
It depends on what the fee is, I mean, I think the reality of it is, is that we don't. When individuals come in and ask for us to make modifications, we don't, we're setting a precedent by doing that. And saying like, well, yeah, so you ask in January, and well, if the sixty days goes by, well, then we're just gonna give it to you for free. It's like, I, I hate to, I hate to do that, I don't want it to be punitive for them to have it. I think it has to be, I think any kind of fee or permit fee has to be. Obtainable. I'm not looking for five thousand dollars.
Right.
Right.
Is it an annual fee from the time they apply for it, so they apply for it in October, would be after, next year they would pay a fee, or is it?
Calendar makes a lot more sense, and it's just, it matches everything else, dogs. I think, to me, it would just make sense to follow.
And as a contractor, if we go apply for a permit or for a license up in Johnson County, as of today, we are licensed from today till the end of the year. Starting January one to the following year, so I think that's prob- you know, probably the way to go, yeah. And, I, I mean, like you say, there has been a fee for this year, I, I don't know if I.
And, and I think on the fees, to me, it makes sense. That your initial is when you're setting up a structure, you're setting up a coop, but all of that run, that one be more, and then. I think your recurring one would be a small, like, would be a smaller portion, because you don't have. As much work, I think, on the city side of ensuring your setbacks are proper.
To your point, Commissioner Skidmore, and as you all think about this, we could certainly draft the resolution. That the fee would be zero until December thirty-first of this year, and then beginning January one, whatever fee. And you may want, you may want to give some time for. You know, Lucas to, to talk with Melanie and, and talk with Melissa and let staff tell you, we think it'll take approximately this much time, and this is a reasonable fee. At least give you guys some numbers on the backend for what staff may have to deal with. And this process, so you know what I envisioned was, we would talk about it today, obviously it will filter out there to the public. We would revisit this September eleventh, give it an extra week, obviously with the holiday. Come back in two weeks and talk about it, and touch up any changes that you all want, that gives us the eighteenth. If we needed to talk about anything a third time, and then you could vote on September twentieth. At your, at your meeting on that day, so we'd have plenty of opportunity here as we get closer, if you get public comment, more things need to, to be adjusted. So, that's good.
I guess that my question would be, and I know that you've discussed this, but just straight out, who's enforcing these regulations?
City codes officer. Police department and animal controls within police department, so those two.
And do we currently have a full-time animal control officer? Because we're adding to. The labor of the animal control officer with both bees and with chickens, so Chief Winegartner?
The current employee task with animal control has multiple duties, including community service and dare, and municipal court bailiff. We have not had a dedicated single animal control officer employee for. The back of it, it's been over a decade.
So certainly we want to discuss, or we, we want you to, to track that and see what kind of additional labor we're asking from our animal control officer. Is that an animal control officer typically available on the weekends?
He is not scheduled on weekends typically.
Okay. So part-time animal control officer, and he does a great job. That person does a great job, and I, I don't want that to sound punitive at all, I'm just trying to be realistic about the workload that we're adding. To that animal control officer. It, it says here, when we're talking about when chickens are allowed, that it'll be approved by the, the animal control officer and issued by the city clerk. And then, like you said earlier, city attorney Finch, that we kind of need to talk about the process, do we need to continue to talk about that, or do you have some direction on where we're going?
What I would propose that I, I provide you with next would be a memo based on today's conversation, that here are the variables that you've identified. So that when we get together again on the eleventh, we're kind of going through those and saying, okay, is it four or six chickens? Is it animal control and city clerk, or is it community development talking with the city clerk? You know, that, that kind of list of things, the size of the lots, and that's where that we kind of follow up on the variables that you all have identified today. And if there are things that we need to give you input on, like staff suggests a fee of X. That we have all that for you, so that you're working through the differences or variables on the eleventh with an idea that. By that next week, we have things in final form, and the public may, may come in, weigh in on some of those variables for you too. You may have folks come in and say, oh, we want no more than four, or we want six, or we want. Yeah, whatever, so. I, I think the next step is for me to just give you kind of the, the areas where you're still drilling down to the decision. And then let you do them.
I think we also have to be cognizant of the fact that, while there has been a large voice of individuals that say that they want. Chickens permitted in the city, there is still a large voice of people saying they do not. And so, those that want eight, there are plenty that want zero. So, just keep that in mind, and that we're responsive to all citizens.
So, that being said, Mr. Finch, is there anything that you're, you're wanting, needing more from us? I know you say keep drilling it down, but is there anything that you're lacking from us, some direction?
I don't think so, I mean, obviously, Mr. Bradley had a lot of different changes, some of them are more syntax. Those are easy enough to, you know, work through, but there's some of those things, and I may just. Kind of give them to you in a memo form and, and give you a repeat of what I've given you here, for example, I can't say. Out of sight, out of mind, or, or keep out of view as much as possible, because I, we can't enforce it, you know. But, you know, he, he brought up an issue about the, the nucleus hives, and do we want to shorten the notice period for that? You know, so there may be some questions in there for you like that, that I could, I can put in more of a bulleted list, and we can just go through on the eleventh. And you can say, yeah, we'll try it at this, if it's not working, we'll lower it, or, yeah, let's cut it in half and see how that works. You know, kinds of things. I think ultimately, when you do this, and I think what. You're not breaking completely new ground, right? Other cities have done this and had some success with it. You're not breaking completely new ground, right? Other cities have done this and had some success with it. Some of the state's largest cities, for example, don't regulate beekeeping at all, and you haven't. And you haven't had a big problem with it to this point. Um and, and I suspect that chickens may be some of the same way. You may have more people keeping chickens without a permit than you realize. Um but what, what will tip the hand most of the time is not city enforcement, but neighborhood complaints. Um and that's when people will, that's when the city will get involved, because somebody is doing something. They shouldn't be doing or in excess of what they, they are legally allowed to do, and then you'll hear about it. So. I hope we don't have a problem. I hope that as you consider these and pass these, that. Things will kind of continue on as they, as they have with more people feeling that they can. Meaningfully engage in these hobbies, you know, whether it's eggs or honey production or gardening and, and. And this is an example of what you all say. You want people to come talk to you. When they want to change, and you want them to, you're gonna try to work through the process thoughtfully, and I know it's taken a while, but I think you've been very thoughtful and deliberate here. Um and I, I think giving some extra time to work through these. Variables is exactly the right conclusion to that very thoughtful and deliberative process. Any other questions or comments, Commissioners? Just now? Thank you, appreciate your time. All right, that moves us on to item E, which is comments by our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners. Utility operations, uh the water plant is uh winterizing the pool as the twenty twenty-three pool season's complete. Also want to point out that uh our plant superintendent Scott Sneeden reports that due to the extreme heat, we've had a increase in our. Effluent and uh. We've uh we're averaging about one point five million gallons per day. This week, um Superintendent Sneeden and plant operator two. Pfeiffer are attending the uh American Waterworks Association Conference, uh where they're. Focusing their efforts or attention on the uh PFAS forever chemicals. As well as uh receiving updates to the EPA's lead and copper rule and uh the always present at these conferences utilizing new technology. Uh water distribution and wastewater collection, uh crews continue to work on the Ninth Street Waterline Project. Uh they're also performing camera inspections of the recently completed uh cure and place uh pipe sewer line repairs. And they uh are conducting utility line locates for fiber installation. That's now occurring in the community, and this week, um they're working on uh Ninth Street. Again, and uh cleaning up the city's uh filter pile. Water replacement facility, crews assisted uh the parks team with mowing and installing, and they also installed gearbox. And repaired the uh clarifier gearbox mentioned in last week's update. So this week, they're. Um getting the clarifier back online. And uh back into service as well as uh assisting with mowing and tree removal operations. Electric distributions continuing to uh make more permanent repairs to the distribution system and focusing on our street lights. Uh election, electric production, our power plant personnel operated units six and seven for red power. On uh August seventeenth, twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third. Crews conducted a standard maintenance operation on generator three on the eighteenth and generated alongside unit six and seven on Tuesday the twenty-second. Uh power plant also performed the maintenance run for generator number four on the twenty-first. Staff assisted mowing of Hope Cemetery in Kansas Park in the morning and uh with painting the OMA in the afternoon. Power plant team performed routine subst- substation inspections and on Monday, August twenty-first assisted. With uh performance test on the new cooling tower, uh Superintendent Dave Hunsaker. Uh attended the KMU power plant or power operator workshop committee meeting and uh. Our uh assistant superintendent Rocky Evans represented the city. As well as the superintendent Hunsaker for the KMEA EMP one meeting that was hosted here. Want to also note that the power plant established a new peak for the twenty twenty-three season on August twenty-first and August twenty-eighth. With uh three, thirty-eight point six megawatts, and on August twenty-first and twenty-second, the peak is the highest since. Twenty twelve, which was thirty-nine point eight megawatts, and the highest August peak since two thousand eleven. Which was forty-one point two, so let's hope we stay with uh two thousand eleven as our, our August peak. I want to point out that uh warehouse took delivery of two five hundred. KVA pad mount transformers and received and installed the final shipment of the twenty twenty-three budget improvement for the racking and inventory upgrades. Uh Superintendent Kurt Altic. Operations coordinator Anthony Parker and inventory technician Zach Peterson installed. The uh pallet racking and loaded and entered into the inventory system, uh. Water and sanitary sewer parts for distribution to our utility crews needed. Also want to highlight that Superintendent Altic asked that I convey the following from him and his team, and that's that he'd like to thank the mayor. Mayor Crowley and all the Commissioners for supporting the warehouse with the purchase of the new racking system and. Stock Picker Man left during the recent storm outage. We had ninety percent of our electrical parts moved back inside. The warehouse and the new racking system. We received several good comments from other crews on how nice the new rack is and how well they could see the parts on each shelf. And I included uh a photo at the end of this, where we've got a couple of uh pages uh of photos of that new system. Public Works Operations, Street and Stormwater Department highlights by our Superintendent Justin McCurdy. He reports to his team, continues curbside pickup from the recent storm debris and assisted in mowing uh Hope and Highland Cemeteries. And I want to thank our uh, our street crews for uh. Cleaning up both the riverbanks and for removing litter and more than a hundred and thirty tires from the river. This week, crews will continue curbside cleanup of storm debris from the July thirtieth storm event, Parks Department. Uh Park Superintendent D- DJ Wells reports that crews trimmed trees and removed storm damaged trees in Forest Park last week. This week, they're focused on mowing and trimming and uh preparation for the annual antique tractor and car shows in September. Uh police department activities last week, uh Chief Weingartner reported that. The um that Ottawa's finest extended two conditional offers of employment which were accepted. OPD's newest recruits will need to attend KLEC C. This week, our department. Is preparing for the Labor Day step campaign with extra officers on duty for targeted enforcement as the beating seatbelt and DUI val-. Violations, however, chief notes that. Increased personnel costs for participating in the step program are financed through. Uh participation in the program, but because of limited staff availability, we have limited participation. Also want to highlight that uh. National Overdose Awareness Week is Sunday, August twenty-seventh through Saturday, September second. So to highlight awareness of the epidemic. Uh Ottawa's men and women in blue will be distributing information to address. That highlight the uh, the increased overdoses in Ottawa and Franklin County. Fire Department highlights include the um hosting of the September eleventh memorial service on Monday. At eight AM, Monday, September eleventh at eight AM at Fire Station One, and I've included a program flyer. As an attachment to this. And uh staff highlight is that, oh, I also want to point out that uh. Chief Mathias assisted with leadership Franklin County on Thursday, August twenty-fourth. And this week's operational highlight is that uh our department's been notified for possible mobilization for wild. Uh wildfire deployment sometime in the first couple of weeks in September. So that includes my, my report, and I'll uh, I'll add some additional items here. Uh when we get uh, we'll get back, but. And includes that new racking system, uh and a comparison photo of the old system, so you can see. How well it, it cleaned up. With that investment.
Can you just, for those listening who don't know, on the water plant, um what effluent is, you said with the, the heat, we had effluent, there was a.
So what we're taking in. To be processed. Sent back out and distributed into the system.
Thank you.
That's it. If there are no questions for myself or any of the staff.
All right, uh comments by city commissioners, Commissioner Kayla.
Um congratulations to all those that participated in Airport Day. Um here it was a great success. And so um congratulations on that. It's always fun when we can highlight our airport. Uh I do want to bring up a conflict that I have on the eleventh of September. I'm not going to be here at that particular meeting, and um. I understand that we may also have another commissioner that's not going to be present. And so um it sounds like we have a lot to discuss on that, and I'm not necessarily asking for it to be delayed. I'm just. Announcing that I won't be here from the eleven.
Hey Commissioners, I don't, um uh we became aware today that another commissioner may be um in and out uh that day. It's a prior obligation. Uh I know at one time, Mr. Finch had requested an executive session. I think that possibly could be moved to the eighteenth. So that would take care of that. Um Commissioner Kayla, would you be back for that one? Um and once again, I think that's another one where Commissioner Graves might be uh, might be available, may, may not be, but. If so, could certainly join us by uh via Zoom. Um September eleventh, is that, are, are all the rest of us available? I'll be here, okay, okay. So that leaves us three, so we'd have a forum. I think uh we, you know, we can certainly discuss some of that stuff, have some of our information, some input. Um for those, you know, Commissioner Kayla, Commissioner Graves, uh if you wanted to email anything. Uh that you felt uh pertinent, certainly do, but we're certainly gonna have the eighteenth to have the discussion. On some of this information also that we went over today, so. Good.
Yeah, just make sure that, I mean, anybody else should happen to be absent. We don't have.
Yeah, yeah, if us, they're certainly available, that's great. Uh we can have that meeting, but if not, we'll have to cancel, unfortunately. That all, Commissioner Kayla?
Yeah, that's all I have for today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh Commissioner Clayton.
Um just want to say I'm thankful for the, the cooldown this week. My window's open. Been able to cut back on utilities a little, so that's nice. Um and on the bees and chickens, just really want to reiterate that, you know, there's a lot of people talking that we really do hear you. There's just a lot of work that goes into something like this, and that's, like we've mentioned, that it's been. Several months, um and through a budget season, but work has been going in the background. Um and that, so I always want people to know, reach out, we hear your concerns, questions, comments. Um just because something's not done overnight does not mean we do not hear you, so please reach out for them. Don't have anything else.
Thank you.
Called municipal tree eyes, right? So I like that. Uh. Yeah, I just wanted to say also about the airport days too. It was a good turnout. Of course, the weather made a difference too, but I know a lot of, a lot of people volunteered. A lot of people did a lot of work. Uh I appreciate Mike taking care of the porta potty situation. We got there, they, we didn't have porta potties, and that suddenly. Was important, uh having all those people there for one bathroom, two bathrooms, I guess, but we worked it out, so glad for all your extra effort making that happen. And uh, and yeah, it's just a good turnout. We had a number on that. Do we have any way of knowing how many people were there, Mike?
I did not get a number. We usually try to take the numbers off the amount of tickets that the explorers get out when people come in. Um but that's not a hundred percent accurate. Some people bypass that. Table as they come in.
I'd be curious to see what that was. It was just a great turnout. I thought that some good speakers were there as well, so that's it. Did you win the plane pole? Pardon, did you win the plane pole? No, I didn't. I'm gonna work on that a little bit, but anyway. I gotta work that a little bit more for that.
We had the guy that was a fighter pilot in Vietnam flying F fours. And then he was Top Gun, and then he was a. B two test pilot program, so kind of all over the place.
A lot, a lot of good, good experience. What I really liked was that we got a picture in the lobby of the airport of a TWA flight taking off LAX. And that pilot was there today, and he was talking about how he, I asked him about that, and he said, yeah, they're flying to Paris. It was bad weather. So he asked for twenty thousand more pounds of fuel, but they were supposed to take twenty thousand pounds of freight off the plane. Well, they didn't do that. And he was going down the runway, and he wasn't kicking, picking up enough speed, and he was kind of the point of no return either. Go, you can't abort, you either gotta go. And they showed the airport runway, and it was just right through the end. I mean, he was just at the end of that runway to get up, and so. He said it's kind of a white knuckle moment that he, he made it, so glad to hear that part. Uh but anyway, and also on the mic, on the tree limbs pickup, I guess we're still going around time picking up limbs or happy doing that.
Yes, we are. So we completed the first round through, we're in the second round. Um I'm guessing probably another couple of weeks on that. Trying to give people. Time to finish getting things hauled out to the, to the curb. And so we can get it picked up. I do want to make a note on that. Uh I did receive a few phone calls of people that were. Upset that we didn't pick their stuff up on the first round. And there are several different reasons why we may have done that, and one of those being that we had skid steers loading the trucks. The trees they had may have required bigger equipment to get that stuff loaded, so we picked them up on the second.
And that's all I had.
I have a few comments. I, I do want to pass along with uh Kurt Altic mentioned. Um he'd stopped me this weekend and uh was truly gracious about uh the, the commission's um uh. Approval of the budget for the new racking system. He said uh if it uh, that they got it, I believe, the week before. Um and if it hadn't all been put up, all that stuff would have been outside in boxes when all that rain came in. So he was truly gracious about it. Uh wonderful, it looks great. Um glad that we were able to, you know, do that. Um I also want to mention, I, I had a meeting with uh our county chair, Ian Dickinson, for about an hour and a half, a couple of weeks ago. Uh I've just talked about a lot of stuff that's going on, not just here in Ottawa, but what hap- what's happening throughout Franklin County. Um they got a lot of good stuff going on out there, and she truly thinks that we have some good stuff happening here too, so. And then I also want to. Welcome Director Nice. Um so since you're so new. Exactly what is your title? Cause it's changed, right? Great, well, welcome. Um do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself? Come on up. I know you're fighting a cold, but we'll uh. We'll, we'll set back a little bit.
Really thrilled to be here, uh. Come, I spent six months uh at the state with the Kansas Children's Cabinet and Trust Fund, uh working on childcare, which is. A big part of what I've done in Lynsborne the previous four years as the Assistant City Administrator. Where I, I had wide responsibilities, but uh saw childcare as a big economic development issue, but thrilled to be here. Uh and to get to know uh the, the fine staff that, that you all have in place already and. Continue to work uh towards prosperity of Ottawa.
Well, certainly welcome. Uh I know we've had a vacancy there for a while, and we're excited to have you here and get the ball rolling, so thank you. I have no.
I was gonna say, I, I, your, your educational background was quite extensive too. I think Commissioner Kayla brought up that you spent a lot of time at KU, I understand.
And that's okay.
As far as the heaping of chickens, we don't allow Jayhawks in those.
Discussing that on the eleventh and eighteen.
Well, welcome. Nice to have you. All right, I have a few announcements. Uh next Monday, September fourth is Labor Day uh holiday, so our study session is canceled. And all city offices are closed. September sixth, we have a regular meeting at seven PM here at City Hall, which will actually be our budget hearing. September eleventh, um our, our memorial cer- is it a memorial ceremony at eight AM at Fire Station One at seven twenty West Second Street? And then we also have a study session here at four PM at City Hall. So anything else come before the commission this evening? I'll adjourn.